Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and also broadcast live on the town of Pennfield's website, which is www.pennfield.org, the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Pennfield TV in the App Store, and it is free. If anyone would like to address the board on any public hearing matter tonight, there's going to be a couple of different ways to do that. For folks in the room, you're going to be able to come up and give us your name and address to one of these microphones when we invite people to do that. Another way to make a comment is to call in that number there on the screen, 340-8636, or to submit a comment through the website pennfield.org as well. We will have tonight's hearing. We'll start with our work session. It's going to, there we'll deal with any tabled matters and some routine matters such as voting on the minutes, that sort of thing. Maybe talk about tonight's applications just to get a sense of clarification. Once that's done, we'll start with tonight's public hearings. We'll ask the applicant and any representatives, excuse me, to come up, same thing, give us name and address, and then we'll most likely have board members walk the applicant through the application. Everyone will have certainly an opportunity to speak about it, but we've found that it's more efficient, for the most part, if the board members walk the folks through the application. We have written applications submitted by everybody. They're very thorough. We've all had a chance to look at them, and we certainly appreciate everybody's efforts. That doesn't mean that folks should feel they can't speak what's on their mind. They're certainly entitled to do that. And in fact, one thing that we note every month is, we think the town does a really good job of making sure people in the area are aware of what our agenda's going to be like, what's going to be on the agenda, so that people can come in, speak their mind, submit emails, or call on the phone with comments. And the town does this in a number of different ways. One of the first ways, a very visible way, is applicants are required to post a sign on the property, so that when people are driving by, they see the sign, it's the subject of review. Oh geez, if they're interested, what's going on with that property, they can call the town and get more details. The town also takes the time and the effort to send postcards to people that reside or own property within a certain number of feet of the subject property, also alerting people that something's going on. And then, of course, the old-fashioned way, posting the agenda here at the town hall on a bulletin board. I say that every month, and I'm not 100% sure, but it's pretty close. Somebody's nodding, yes, okay, now I'm 100% sure. And then, of course, posting the website, excuse me, posting the agenda on the website as well. So, we welcome comments for or against or neutral. They're helpful to us. We think it allows us to do our job more efficiently and thoroughly. And I think that's it. With that said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everyone. And let's go to the agenda. And the first, or the second item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the July meeting. Anybody have any comments about the minutes?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion approved by Andres, second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good job with the minutes, as always. And then, tabled applications. Tabled application number two has been withdrawn.
Yes.
That's easy. Tabled application number one, you guys are here again. Do you have some further info from us, or for us, I should say? Or come up and give it to us? And then, I'm sure we're going to have some comments, too, about where we are with this.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
So, I think we got a parking agreement.
Yes.
Right?
We do.
I don't have it in front of me, but do you guys know how many spots you're leasing?
Fifty-four.
Okay. So, between that-
Oh, no, I'm sorry, 37.
Thirty-seven.
With a total of 54.
Total.
Okay, that was going to be my next question. All right, very well, it's okay. It's the right answer, just the wrong question. So, with 54 total spots, what can the occupancy be, Andy? Do we know? You knew I was going to ask that one. All right.
I don't know.
Fine, that's an honest answer. So, we're going to have to table this again, anyway, because I understand that you're still appearing before the planning board, number one, and number two, there's been some activity on the property. And honestly, we may be at the point where we're going to have to have another public hearing, because, I don't know that yet, but that's something we're going to be discussing with council, because there may be some more things that you need, some more relief from this board, a patio, or, you know, whatever they are. And what we want to avoid is resolving the issue in the parking, and then you've got to come back three months later, because now you need a variance for this patio or that patio. So, we'll be in contact with you before the next meeting. I think on the parking, we probably are pretty close to taking a vote once we get that number verified.
I think the planning board still had to have their site plan to say, yes, that is the number of spots, right?
Yeah, that's forthcoming.
All right, you were there on the 10th, and you're going back when? Do you know? Whenever the next meeting is.
We're waiting to get the site plan from O'Neill-Rodeck. We sent off all the information they wanted to see two, three months ago, and we haven't gotten anything back at this point.
Okay. All right, we'll keep the pressure on that. I mean, it's not that we don't like to see you, but, you know, and you guys are trying, but even if it stays on, I don't want you to think you have to come here just to let us know, because Andy's doing a good job of keeping us posted. Like I said, it's always good to see you, but I don't want, your time is valuable, so.
So, what exactly are you looking for from us as far as the parking goes?
What we need to know, and what we've needed to know for a while, is the occupancy of your proposed building, whatever the legal limit is of people in there. That's going to determine how many parking spots the code says you need. It's likely that when we have those numbers, you're going to ask for a variance, I believe, to have fewer numbers than allowed. Somebody on the agenda tonight is asking for a similar request.
I thought all that was kind of established at some point. I sent in another letter of intent with the numbers that I was looking for.
Right. It wasn't until we had the parking agreement in writing that we, and you, knew exactly how many spots you were going to have access to via that agreement and on your own property. So, we have that now. We need to know how many spots the site plan is actually going to show, and we need to know how many spots the code is going to require. And compare that to how many you're going to have.
And I think there's also still changes from the garage that are also going to impact that space for the fire marshal, because in terms of the use for the changes, I believe, is what I read that as, as well.
Right.
Right, there could be some changes there. I initially, right now, the way it stands without the garage, 59 onsite parking spaces are required.
Okay.
So, I think that's the number we're working with, based on the proposed occupancy of the arcade of 70.
Right. So, if that's the number, you need 59 by code, but you have 54, that's, we'd be voting on whether to give you a five-spot variance, which-
The garage is almost, I dare say, a moot point, because that's coming down in the very near future.
Okay. All right.
To accommodate additional parking and-
Well, so if you do that, and that may obviate the need for a variance, if they can put, I don't know.
I think they're still going to need a variance. I think the key thing here is, we have to allow the planning board to formalize a site plan review, come up with an approved site plan, and that'll show exactly how many parking spaces are going to be on the property, and then we'll know how much of a variance.
Well, that's true, too, because how many spots you'll have is going to be determined by the site plan that they approve. That's a good point. And I think Andres was trying to make that, he was using big words, and I didn't quite understand. Okay. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to table it again, and hopefully, next month, we'll have clarification from planning board on the site plan, and we'll be able to vote.
I'll second your motion.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we can go to the public hearings now. Application number one, please.
Kenneth Martinez, 70 White Spire Lane, Webster, New York, 14580, requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a shed with less side setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code, and less rear setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 70 White Spire Lane. The properties currently are formerly owned by Kenneth and Aurora Martinez and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 095.01-4-20. This is application number 23Z-0047.
May we have your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Ken Martinez, 70 White Spire.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, I just want to point out a couple of things about this application, and tell you that my position, and I haven't discussed this, obviously, with any of my fellow board members, but depending on what we hear tonight, I may make a motion to table this so that I can get out to the site with you, somebody from the town, and any, with your permission, any neighbors that may want to be present at that meeting as well. I did stop there earlier today, and I waited, it's my fault, I waited to the last minute, and I walked around a little bit, but not enough to get a good sense of the issues that I saw here. But there are a couple of things that I do want to point out. First of all, your application is you want to put up a shed, and you want to put it closer to two lot lines than is permitted, to boil it down to its simplest. We've had some emails from neighbors, I don't know if, have you seen them?
Yes.
Okay. One issue that was raised in the emails was a potential problem with drainage, and how the shed in that location, perhaps in any location, I don't know, but in that location may, people were concerned that it may act as a dam, if you will, for runoff and cause water. Now, we did have somebody from the town, Amy Owens, go to the site, review it, and I don't know if-
And Michael as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Amy concluded, I'll just read it, it's just a one-sentence email, "Based on our onsite meeting with the resident today, we don't have concerns about the proposed plan causing drainage issues for the neighboring properties," you know, which is a conclusion. One thing I would like, Andy, is to have a little bit more meat on the bone here, so to speak, and, you know, what exactly did they do? Look around, took measurements, whatever, served as the basis for that conclusion? You know, I'd like to know, because it's an important point.
Yeah.
And we should all be comfortable, we, people on the board should be comfortable with that conclusion before we take it into consideration. So, that's, that is issue one. And then, the other issue that I think it would be help, at least, it would help, at least for me, to be out there and look around, is need to really know why the shed has to go in that location, and it can't be put in a location, even with some work, that would bring it into compliance. The answer may be simple, it might be five minutes, me being on the site, I noticed that there's a lot of slope, but one of the comments from a neighbor, the neighbor may speak to it, but talked about how they put in a shed, and they paid for grading to have it done so that they could bring it into compliance. I think that's what the point that was being made. So, I just think it would behoove all of us, whoever would want to join, could, nobody has to, just to get out there in the next couple of weeks, take a look around. You've submitted renderings of the shed, and it's a nice-looking shed. Frankly, the variances that you are requesting in terms of distance aren't all that great. We've granted them, and those amounts before, especially when there are slopes. But I do just want to make sure, again, that that drainage, I'd like to get a little bit more on that, and just have you show here, this is why we can't put it there. Or, in order to have grading done so that we could put it there, it's going to cost us $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, which, one of the factors, as you may know, is financial hardship that it would cause you if you didn't get the variance granted. I do want everybody to know that the applicant has a right to put up a shed if he gets a building permit and complies with zoning. So, there were some comments, we don't think, we don't like the idea of him having a shed at all. Well, no, okay, but that's, he's entitled to put up a shed, again, if he has a building permit and it's in compliance. He's here because he is desirous of getting the variances for its specific location.
Indeed.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just a few words.
Sure.
First of all, I find this quite exciting. It's my first time here, so, you know, technology and everything kind of running-
I don't know that anyone's ever used that word to describe this part.
That is definitely a first.
Again, if you need some support, one IT, I certainly know a few people, but, so, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and the rest of the board. Quite honestly, my experience here in the town, dealing with every one of the members that I've spoken to, from Andy and upstairs, and having people willing to come to the house, it's all a learning process for me, and I've learned from jackhammering to, you know, what it means to do a 2% grading.
Right.
And I'm certainly no expert, so I've been coming back to the people who really know what's going on and how to do it right.
Good.
To get advice, because-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, because my intent, first and foremost, is to address two issues, one of which is establish a good camaraderie with my neighbors.
Good.
Which, you know, when given the opportunity, it's always been a pleasant exchange, and it's really important for me that, whatever the result of this seemingly minute, in my mind, three feet, five feet, moving something, whatever the results, I certainly don't want to generate any animosity. And when we have had a chance to speak, I think I owe them an apology, because I did stop by their homes. I didn't wait till the last minute, but I did, and fortunately, when I was there, I was not able to converse with them, or some hardship had had in the family, so I wasn't able to explain, you know, what the intent was.
Yeah.
From that perspective, I think I could have done a little bit of a better job. Insofar as the emails and the concerns, I think you've spoken about a few that I thought were kind of commensurate, right? I'm putting up a shed, yeah.
Right.
I don't want to generate any precedent that would be against what we're here to do, which is follow a process, as to why it would have to happen or not happen. But at the same time, I know that we're all intent on getting this done. And so, unfortunately, I missed the previous meeting by two weeks, and we have to go through the process of 30 days and a notification.
Yeah.
And like you said, I've even learned that, that the sign wasn't like, oh my gosh, honey, we just got back from vacation, and there's a sign, that we do something wrong, and getting the postcards as well. And so, I think it's fantastic, it's great, and it's a good way to show that everybody cares about the neighborhood.
Yes. Well, it's a wonderful neighborhood, and how long have you been-
There's actually two neighborhoods, right?
Yeah, back-to-back sort of.
My folks are, Dan is right next to me. I've actually been here in Thistleberry, which is a stone throw away. We had our first home.
Oh, okay.
We loved it so much that we built our dream house, and we're still working on it. And so, I know some of the neighbors, yeah, the maps need a little updating.
Yeah.
But it's been almost 20 years, and so, we love it here. We like what we have seen, and, again, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Insofar as the details, I think this is about, mostly, for me, the engineering of the project. Does it fulfill the requirements? And so, the conversation that we had in multiple visits to the site really conveyed to me, and gave me an assurance, that there really is not much to worry about, and particularly as the concern of my neighbors of any type of damming, was the word that was used.
Right.
And modification of flow, insofar as how the grading was done by, you know, Rudy on the side, and Newfeld on the other side, and the challenges that that proposes, right? Which I think the town has done a pretty good job, and we haven't had any issues. The site, as it stands, has probably been graded in a manner that was done to get out of there fairly quickly, and so it's quite steep.
Right.
And that's where one of the desires is to flatten the area a little bit. I learned about the 2%, and we wouldn't be even yielding that, but the flow, as we, as I understood it by what the experts were communicating, would not impinge on any one of my neighbors, and would continue to feed into, what is the word that I always get wrong, Andy? The swale, the, right? The actual feed to the pond. And so, insofar as the aesthetics and the, perhaps that's another apology, right? The place looks like a mess, continues to look pretty disheveled.
It's busy. It's a busy site, no doubt about it.
Such is the nature of a project, right?
Uh-huh.
Particularly a DUII. And so, with regards to the intent to move it forward, so that we can all get rid of hypos, you know, I was presuming that, gee, if I didn't file this, well, then I could move forward with my shed without having to bother anyone, right? So, the three feet and the seven feet, no, the three feet and the five feet has generated all of this, and so, for that hardship, I also apologize, you know, because if I understand correctly, the right to have a shed is one that, you know, is permissible, and without a variance, you pay your dues, you say you're going to be within 10, 10, 10 feet, 10 feet.
Right.
And so, it pains me to hear that perhaps we need to postpone this yet again.
I understand. I figured, I figured that because we missed the last meeting, that it would be a pain, but I, and I just think if we can get out there, and certainly from my perspective, if I can see the site a little bit better than I was able to today, and then also, hopefully, have somebody from the town join us that can speak to the drainage, and, as I said, it's up to you, but if you're willing to invite neighbors as well, if we can get a time that people can attend, I think it'll go a long way into resolving this in a manner that folks can live with.
Okay. You're always welcome, and I want to bring you over to the pool and have a good time, but, you know.
It's a beautiful pool.
My wife, for certain, says, not yet.
Not yet, yeah.
So, birthdays and whatever have been postponed, so.
Okay.
So, just to understand what that would entail, perhaps no more paperwork, just a matter of saying, hey, let's have a date.
Right. What I would ask is Andy or somebody from the town staff to kind of coordinate, see what other board members would like to attend, they're not certainly required to. Obviously, a time and date that works with you, and as I said, if you're willing, any neighbors that would like to join, along with the experts from the town, so that we could just take a look around and have a discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, with no guarantees, I'm not looking to twist anybody's arm to change minds or, no, it's, the main purpose for this, frankly, is a selfish one on my part. I want to get myself in the best position to be able to be fair to all parties concerned here when I cast my vote.
Okay. And so, that would imply meeting you guys again a month from now?
Yes, actually coming in like we are now, but probably a lot more abbreviated next time. But Andy or someone from the town, the ball will be in that person's court to set something up.
Okay. And insofar as any forward movement, progress or otherwise, halting the placement of the shed, right? Not doing any work of that?
Yes, you should halt that, in my opinion, you should halt it, because it hasn't, you don't want to put something up, and then it's not the vote you want.
Right. But insofar as flattening and having, because I, you know, I understand the expense, and in fact, that was one of the requests that I made to one of my neighbors, right? Be patient with me. We have had a number of projects that were quite pricey.
Sure.
That Olympic pool that my wife really wanted, right? And so, you had a chance to see it, but the intention is to pay for professional services. So, I have already someone who is befriended, another person that's been working around here for a long, long time, and he has offered to come and do some of the preparations for the grading, so is that, would that be problematic? Is that-
I just, I guess I would caution you about spending time and money on doing things that are presuming that you are going to get the variance you're requesting.
Yeah, but I'm saying-
It's up to you.
If I didn't get the variance, I'd still be placing a shed somewhere.
Right. Oh, yeah, absolutely. You feel free to do that.
And I still would be doing and moving forward on the grading of how it was left, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
I understand now what you're saying, and sure, go ahead, you don't have to wait for that stuff, it's not related to the variance request.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, and I talked a lot, but do you have anything else to say about your application?
I certainly talked more than I had-
I think the written application's clear.
Than I had expected. I wanted Andy to be the talker, but-
He's kind of a quiet guy.
Is there any other engineering thing? Because I know a sentence can say a lot, but for me, that was it. There's no problem, there's no issue, let's move forward.
Well, I'll have the engineer be more descriptive about how they came to the conclusion that there's not going to be a drainage issue there.
Yeah, and it would be nice if someone could attend as well. That would be nice.
And is that something I should try to facilitate, or?
The person from the town, Andy, will set up.
Yeah.
And if you want to have any contract or a worker there to comment on what it would cost to do, that's up to you. Not suggesting you do that, either, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I don't see anybody that has called in to comment, and I don't see any electronic submissions, so I'll open it up to anybody in the audience that cares to speak about this application. Okay. All right. Well, I think anybody that's here on this application has kind of heard me loud and clear, and as far as I'm concerned, be nice to hear from you, and frankly, if for whatever reason you can't make it that day, there's plenty of other times for you to comment. We'll be back here next month. Okay? Okay? So given all this, I'm going to make a motion to table for the reasons discussed.
Second.
All right. George, we'll give the second to George. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's patience.
And I apologize to the rest of you, but I have to go somewhere else. I'd be interested in your part. Some of you are suited. Seems like you've been here many times. You know, I've never.
Let's go with number two.
That was tabled, right?
Well, the applicant requested it be postponed to the next meeting.
All right. Thanks for being on top of things there, Matt. So number two is going to be next month as well. Let's see, number three.
MRB Group, 145 Culver Road, Suite 160, Rochester, New York, 14620. On behalf of Jeffrey Jennings, Jennings, Nelson and Maddel Funeral Home, request approval for area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a garage with less side setback and less rear setback than required under section 250-5.5-D3 of the code at 1704 Penfield Road. Properties currently are firmly owned by JRM Properties LLC and is owned BNR, SBL number This is application number 23Z-0049.
All right. If we could have names and addresses for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Paul Schreiner from MRB Group.
Robin Jennings, 1704 Penfield Road.
And Jeff Jennings, same address.
Great.
Excellent, thank you. Do you have a little formal presentation or you want me to just hit right into questions or?
Let's give a brief overview for everybody here, I guess.
Yeah.
The Jennings own the funeral home on Penfield Road and they're in the process of sprucing up the place and making it a little nicer, a little upgrade to what they have now. And we've been in front of the planning board for site plan approval and last week it was granted with conditions. I'm not sure what those conditions are at this point. I think it's.
We have the conditions.
We didn't? I looked for them on the website and I couldn't find them.
I thought you sent them to me. So the conditions were they want to see, the conditions are they want to see the architectural drawing with, in color, because the exterior of the building will change. It's now white with black shutters. It is going to change to, the entire building will be resited, which is not an issue. We actually have the colors that we're going to be using. And their other condition was they want to see, along with what we're talking about today, there's a retaining wall on the side of the building closest to the nursing home. They want to see, but that wall is going to be going away and they want to see the architectural drawing without that wall. So those are the two things that they want to see, which I've talked to our architect, Pat Morbeto, and he said that's not an issue. He can get those to the planning board, so.
And the biggest, the reason why we're here in front of you is for the side and rear setback variances, is the garage in the back, which you can see there. You do a good job operating that.
Side setback, right?
It's, well, it's the side setback and the rear setback.
No, side setback, I think. I didn't think it's rear.
Yeah.
You got both?
I think it's both.
Okay.
So what we have right there now is we have a shed and the garage right next to it. Rebuild the entire garage and it's pretty much going to be in the same footprint of what's there now.
Correct. The shed will come down, the existing metal garage with the flat roof. I don't know who in this part of the country ever thought a flat roof was a good idea, but that will come down and it will be replaced with, again, as Paul said, the same footprint, but instead of a shed in garage, the garage is five bays with a shed. Now it will be just six bays. On the bottom picture, you can see that. Just full disclosure, I said the same thing to the planning board. We tried not to have to be here. I did actually reach out, no offense to any of you, but I tried to not.
You don't find this exciting?
Almost as much as when people want to come and see me. But anyway, I did approach through his office, Mr. Hurlbut, and asked if he would sell some of his property along the driveway, property that we currently mow and maintain and he doesn't use, but he didn't want to do so. So here we are, so.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess in a sense, I looked this as a, for a quick summary here. For the side setback currently, or I guess you're looking at it for a 17.8 foot from the 20, from the northwest side property line, which that's from what's existing right now would make you just six inches closer than where it is right now. So in a sense, that's kind of, to give you an idea, the shed sits there and you want to go that much closer is really the change we would see as we drove by.
Correct.
And then from the northeast side of the property, looks like it's 27.6 from the 30, I guess for the rear, and that's currently your 2.4, or your, which makes it 2.4 feet and it'll end up being two and a half inches closer than what it is now. So in a sense, it'd be, you could barely see that as you're going by from that.
I don't think, I don't think we can build it and measure it at the same time.
Correct, to make it.
So that's the, that's the area of setbacks that we're looking for, yeah.
Perfect, perfect. So from what I'm seeing, it's really you're improving the property in a sense, you know, a lot of times we look at what variances of when you're looking to change something is, you know, does it improve the site? In my opinion, from taking the shed, it's a freestanding shed by itself, to incorporating it into the full structure, I think makes an improvement in terms of the property as well. Because you're incorporating it and you're also updating the property as well to be more within code compliance, I think, with what's standards now for building as well for that. So I don't, you know, in a sense, it's not a large setback that we're looking for compared to what's there right now.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, that's well stated, certainly well stated.
In terms of lighting, things like that, we're not going to see any additional lighting coming off to the driveway side for the senior living up top or anything like that. It's all going to stay, the lighting will stay till you're inside the garage door side.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Any exterior lighting will be along the front of the building, not along the side or the back.
Yeah. Well said. Yeah, and actually just out of curiosity, what colors are you going to go with now?
So if you can bring up the exterior elevate, the front proposed elevation of the building, the building will have the hardy plank siding. It will have this color on, I'll say.
Evening blue.
95% of it. The small peak above the new front doors will be an accent color. And the side of the garage, again, for aesthetics, there's, if you look at the second picture down, there's a little bit of an area in the middle of the garage that's kind of got a peak right there. That will also be the accent color, a little bit of aesthetics as well.
Nice. So a little more modernization.
Exactly, yes. Get rid of the metal, sheet metal garage with a leaky roof.
That's all the questions I have, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
No, no.
All right. I don't see any electronic submissions or any phone calls. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? Okay, well then let's move ahead with the seeker.
Okay. I move this to type two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
I'll second that. Okay, so we have a seeker motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the merits.
Yep. I'm going to move to approve the area variance as requested. As we go through the test here, no, nothing was identified that would create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. It's a small change. Anyway, we're looking at six inches as the largest amount from what's existing there now. So I think that'd be difficult to perceive by, you know, changing the character. Other alternatives, besides I think removing the garage and the shed because everything requires a variance, no matter what you do there, the applicant did even look to purchase additional property, but the neighboring parcel didn't want to subdivide off any. So that option was, you know, pursued, which obviously would be an expensive option, but was still not feasible to do. As I said, six inches is about as much as we have here for a change from what it is now. And I think that's, there's really no adverse impacts from this as well. If anything, I think it'll be more improvements to the site.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated by Andra, second by Laura. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Good luck.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Take it easy. How many years ago was it?
My son turned 25 today, so it had to have been 12 years ago.
Years ago, when one of us was a young man, we coached little, God, little, little guys together, little, yeah. Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck. Before the next application, and so I don't get yelled at after the meeting, I do want to read something in the record about last month's meeting. We met on, oh, I don't know, July 20th, whatever the date was, and we had received a comment on an application after the fact. Good thing the comment was in favor of the application because it was approved. But just for the record, we had a comment from, let's see, Paul, from Paul Bishop, saying he's in support of allowing the variance for the shed to be placed closer to the property line. So thank you for making the comment and as I said, it's, you are on the right side on that one, so we're good. Okay, thanks. If we can go to the next application, please.
Woods Oviak Gelman LLP, 1900 Bauchanan Place, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Michael Mada, K9 Resorts Luxury Pet Hotels, requests approval for area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a taller fence than permitted under section 250-7.1-D4 of the code at 2222 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by 2226 Penfield Road LLC and is owned limited business, SBL number 140.01-1-7.2. This is application number 23Z-0050.
Gentlemen, could we have your names and addresses, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Goldman. I'm the attorney and agent for the applicant this evening, Michael Mada, who is sitting to my right, who is the franchisee for the K9 Resort Luxury Pet Hotel. The luxury pet hotel is a product which has been successfully rolled out throughout the country and we're looking to do it in the Rochester area. Michael is a Rochester resident, is a businessman in the area, has a passion for dogs and the care of dogs. And he has located this particular property, which is located within the LB zoning district, and the use is a conditional use permitted within that district. We've met with the planning board and had a good meeting with them last month. They were looking for some more details relative to some of the issues, in particular, some verification on noise issues, some architectural issues and the like. We're here this evening requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot high fence around what is a dog play area, which is immediately adjacent to the building and not near any property line. So basically, it's interior to the site. It's not at all visible from Penfield Road. It is on the, is on the north side of the property and is screened from adjacent properties by a fair amount of landscaping and there is some distance in that area as well. So I think you're familiar with the plans. Michael has provided some additional information, I don't know if it made it to the board, about the particular product in the fence. This is a specific type of fence, which is designed to provide for noise attenuation. It does absorb about 98% of the noise of what may be inside the fence and the fence area. The height variance we're requesting is one, to allow for that noise attenuation, the higher the fence, the more protection there is. But at the same time, also are looking for the safety and security of the dogs to allow them to remain within that area. Six-foot high fence is deemed to be insufficient for that purpose. So we're asking for the eight-foot high fence in this particular location. I think for the most part, when we talk about fencing, we're concerned about what the impacts are going to be because we're on a property line and everything else and visually what that is going to do in residential neighborhoods. This is a town-wide standard that we have. So within the commercial area, we believe that it is appropriate for us to consider that eight-foot high fence at this location. With regard to the legal standards you have to take a look at, we tried to incorporate that in our letter of intent, which went in with our application to talk about the particular standards. With that, I'd like to give Michael the opportunity to add any comments that he has, if I haven't totally sucked up all your oxygen here.
Yeah, I think you covered everything. Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Mada. I wasn't born here, but I was raised here. I'm currently residing at 643 West Bloomfield Road in Pittsburgh. I moved there in January. And on the screen is Kevin Tennant. He was here for the planning board session. He's with K9 Corporate in Fanwood, New Jersey. He has much more knowledge, obviously, than I do. This is my first zoning board meeting ever and so I'm nervous and it is kind of exciting, actually. I don't get to do these things very often.
Three times in the same meeting, I don't know how to handle that.
I am. I'm happy to be here because this is new to me and I like new things and it's, I think it's kind of cool. So I think that's enough out of me, anyway. Nice to meet you.
For the record, I don't share that kind of excitement, but I'm very glad to be here and very glad to see you all again.
All right. Well, I'll start off with saying excellent application. All the details are there. I had a chance to take a quick drive so I could look at the property to see, because it's hard, sometimes it's hard to visual from the, visualize it without being able to actually see it. So I don't have a lot of questions based on your very well-described dissertation on what you were attempting to do. The only thing that did come to mind was, did you have an opportunity to speak to the neighbors of the adjoining property, owners of the adjoining property, and were there any challenges or concerns that they raised during those conversations?
We do have one of our neighbors here who had, who had talked to the planning board and raised some issues relative to the particular use. Frankly, it's, I'm sure he is going to speak this evening. I would almost hope that he would speak in favor because these issues actually address some of the issues which were raised, dealing with noise, dealing with visual and the like. To the extent of what our fence does is that it does provide that degree of protection. So, you know, that is, that is a neighbor that we have to our northeast, if you will.
Okay.
Our neighbor to the south is institutional. It's, it is Rochester Regional Health, I believe, has a facility there. We had no reason to believe that they would have any interest in this particular application. They're a recent tenant. We haven't spoken with them. I don't think that you have spoken with anybody else.
Yeah.
Specifically in the neighborhood. There is a residential community in Pembroke, which is pretty far removed from where we are. As a matter of fact, the office building is between our property and the, and the Pembroke community. We've not heard anything from Pembroke relative to this.
And the gentleman that's on the screen again, your name was?
Kevin. Kevin, yep.
Yeah, so Kevin.
Vice President.
Go ahead, sorry, keep going.
Sorry. No, Vice President of Franchise Operations at K9 Resorts.
Gotcha. So it, obviously Kevin, you represent the, this in a broader sense. Can you tell us a little bit about the noise impacts at other locations and if this type of fencing has been able to reduce? if this type of fencing has been able to reduce or eliminate the, any challenges or concerns the neighbors would have with the noise?
Sure, absolutely. So, this fence has actually been utilized in our system since December of 2020. At our first location in Houston, Texas, they're the first K9 resort to have this type of fence in. Prior to this, we had your standard backyard vinyl interlocking flat vinyl fence, which did not have the sound mitigating qualities that this material or this fencing has. So, since then, we've opened, oh geez, over a dozen K9 resort locations with this BuffTech fence, have not had any resistance from any neighbors, no complaints, et cetera. And, you know, Jerry did a wonderful job of describing the fence. The one thing I would add to it is, it is also used for highway problems, sound barrier between highways and residential areas, because of its sound mitigating qualities. When it comes to the, the height of the fence, it's really for, both for sound and for safety and security of the dogs on the inside. The material itself absorbs 98% of direct sound that is impacted on the fence. Your standard dog stands about two feet off the ground, so you've got about six feet further as it goes, as the noise may travel up above the fence. But not only do, does this material have sound mitigating qualities, our operations in our brand also dictate when a, a group, for example, is rambunctious, or there are multiple dog, barking dogs out in the outdoor yard, we are bringing the dogs inside our play yard, so as not to disturb the neighborhood. We like to be good neighbors, we want to be good neighbors. We're a very high-end pet resort for dogs, and we certainly want to maintain that, that brand identity. So, you know, we do make sure that those dogs that are a little bit more rambunctious or, or being extra playful or making some noise are brought into, into the yard. Additionally, dogs are not playing out in the yard for 12 hours a day. They're really out there rotating most of the time from the inside of the building to go outside to have an elimination break, facilities, if you may, and then they'll run around a little bit and then come back into the building. So, you know, from that, from that perspective, our operations also cover any noise that may be issued. We have many letters of recommendation from here in Fanwood, New Jersey, where our corporate headquarters and our flagship location is, in favor of our brand. We've got neighbors that are directly behind our location here, that have, you know, testified that they've never had any sound issues in neighboring areas as well.
Okay, well, thank you for the, the breakdown. To be honest, the additional height of the fence, from a standpoint of, you know, maintaining the, the noise is obviously important, but keeping the animals in is probably, from my perspective, a bigger, a bigger need for that. Personally, having known dogs that could jump over a six-foot fence, so. I don't have any additional questions at this point, Dan, unless somebody else on the board does.
I do, but I'll open it up to anybody else.
Go ahead.
So, one kind of very practical question for you is, if this request is denied, are you still going to move forward with the project?
Yes, we will, and Kevin can speak to what we would do in, in the event that we weren't able to put an, an eight-foot fence in.
Okay, that'd be good to hear that.
Sure, I'm happy to. So, obviously, our preference would be to have an eight-foot fence, that's our brand standard. We do have one location that is open that has a material called Dog Proofer. For lack of a better term, it looks like a curved fence that goes up into the yard, similar to a prison play yard, unfortunately, is the best way I can describe it. And that's really just, it's about a three-foot curved barrier that is attached to the top of a six-foot fence to keep dogs from being able to jump the six-foot height and pull themselves up and over a six-foot fence. But our brand preference, obviously, would be to go with the eight-foot fence, but we do have solutions.
How's, what's the noise, what's the noise mitigation difference between the six-foot and the eight-foot fence?
I don't have a measurement for that, I just know that the material itself absorbs 98% of direct sound that is impacted on the fence. So, again, you've got a two-foot dog, you've got four feet more room over the top of the fence, obviously, the sound mitigation is better on the eight-foot fence because of the additional light.
Yeah, and the only thing I would.
Direct sound is still the same.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is, the, the fence itself has a, an STC Sound Transmission Class of 26.
Okay. I'm sure that means something.
Yeah, it doesn't mean much to me either, but it's in the literature that I sent today, so I figured any engineer in the room would understand that, but you're probably right.
Yeah, Dan, just for reference, the, the, on the side of the highways, those are rated at 30.
Oh, okay, cool, that's good to know.
I think aesthetically as well, the eight-foot-high fence does, does provide a, a nice aesthetic buffer as well. The, the other, the other fixes, if you will, at, at the six-foot-high height are not as, not quite as attractive.
Did I understand that correctly, that if you were to do a six-foot fence, it would not be the sound acoustic material, it would be a standard?
No, no, that's, is that correct? No, it would be the same fence, it would just be with basically like an addition to it that kind of prevents dogs from getting up and out.
Would the addition still be below the six-foot? Because I, that'd be one of the questions I would ask Andy, is, if you add that cantilever up, does that make the fence higher than six-foot anyways? Does that defeat the, you know, can you actually make that happen?
Whether, whether the top of the fence is just a standard straight fence, or it's a curving, it's.
It's whatever the.
To the top of the curve, I guess, in terms of.
Yeah.
I think, I think Kevin can better speak to that, that's more of, it's actually not part of the fence, it's an addition that is added on to the fence, almost like.
Addition to the fence.
Yeah, it's an addition to the fence, so we'd have a six-foot fence, and then the curvature would attach to the inside of the fence and just prevent the dogs, almost like a barbed-wire fence does, but not.
Yeah, I understand the concept of, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but it would extend above the six-feet, six-foot height, correct?
I don't think, I think the point is, is that to maintain the, to maintain it, it shouldn't extend beyond the six-foot.
Right. It would be a challenge to be able to do that and to accomplish.
The Dog Proofer, the Dog Proofer gets attached on the interior side of the fence, about three feet below the top of the fence, and then curves inward to eliminate any dogs from being able to get over the fence. So, it may be an inch or two visible above the six-foot fence, but it doesn't add an additional two or three feet to the top of the fence.
Do you have any idea?
That's adjustable, but my idea is down to the fence.
Do you have any idea how many, what's the largest number of dogs that would be out in this area at any given time, if you know?
In the play area? It, it depends on, there's only, I'll let Kevin speak to this, he can speak to it better than I can, but there's only X amount of dogs that can be in the facility at one time, whether they're in their rooms or in the indoor play area, which is attached to the outdoor play area. So, there wouldn't be any more than 20 dogs out there at any given time. Usually, they just go out to eliminate, and then they come back into the indoor play area, but they can romp around out there as long as they're behaving themselves, which they do, in a, in a group setting typically.
Well, basically, there are three separate components of the play area. There's, and you can see it on the site plan, which is on the screen. There's a small dog play area, there's a large dog play area, and a private play area. That private play area are for the less social dogs, if you will. So, to that extent, we would not expect to see large quantities, but let's speak about the, the going outside for elimination. There's, there's a highly sophisticated sanitary system and turf system, which is a part of this. It's not basically the laying on the normal ground or just a plain astroturf type of surface. So, it's there to maintain it as a sanitary condition and to address smell and, and to address other issues as well. And that's something we're, we're certainly in more depth at the planning board, but operationally is very important for us. So, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Kevin?
No, absolutely. So, those turf yards and fences are sanitized twice daily, one within bacterial enzyme called OdorPent, which basically breaks down any organic material that would cause any illness or odor. And at the end of the day, we use a hospital-grade material or cleaner called Rescue, which is a hydrogen peroxide-based cleaner that basically kills any sort of pathogen on contact. And that is part of our protocol, it's done twice a day, every day, that the dogs are out in the yards. To answer the question about the number of dogs, that varies depending on the facility itself. Our corporate office sets a, a limit to the amount of dogs that could be in the room based on the actual size of the interior daycare room. So, a facility like this one, we're approximating a total occupancy or maximum occupancy of about 90 dogs. The 100% occupancy of 90 dogs at one given time is a very low percentage that happens. On any given day in those play yards, you'll probably get, on a daily average, 40 to maybe 50 dogs between both small and large dog daycare play in those play yards, but the overall daycare capacity based on the square footage of that build-out could be as high as 90.
And I think the best kind of way, I think you touched on it, Kevin, the best way to describe that, I was thinking about my answer, and it wasn't very clear, is that if, let's just say round numbers, there are 90 dogs, we're at capacity, it's Christmas time, people are on vacation, that's 90 dogs in the building, say 45 are in the small dog area, 45 are in the large dog area, which would never happen, because you always have dogs that are in their rooms, they're tired, they're coming back from a bath, they're being fed, but whatever, all the dogs are out of the rooms, they're all in the play areas. So, you have 45 in the small dog, 40, 45 in the large dog, and most of them are going to be inside, so there are going to be dogs filtering outside. So, like I said, 15 to 20 at any given, one, or one given time would be accurate, at the most.
There are two components also to the, to the dogs that are there. We do have some who are overnight guests, and we have some who are day guests. So, there is a mix in terms of how that works. So, it, it is for those that are resident there, if you will, kind of spread out a little bit more.
Yep, that makes sense. Last question I have, I'm looking at the planning board tabling resolution, and there's some, some requested submissions, and one, honestly, I'd be interested in seeing, I think George kind of touched on this, but number two says submission of field sound tests and reports from other K9 Pet Resort locations.
We have those.
So, that, that, have you submitted to planning board?
I actually just handed everything over to Jerry on a flash drive, which includes a bunch of videos of existing K9 locations, both small dog, large dog play areas. Kevin was kind enough to go back home and take videos of him walking from the outside of the building. Their building is double the size of ours, they had 220 dogs in the building that day. You couldn't hear a single dog on the outside of the building, in the lobby. These buildings are totally soundproof, these guys have been doing this for 18 years and have really thought of, anything they haven't thought of, they're still thinking of, and it's, it's incredible to see that, the soundproofing that goes into it. There's acoustic block, a bladder that goes on the inside, interior walls, and the inside of the exterior walls, that's used in apartment complexes and condominiums to keep sound in. And so, sorry, to your question, yes, there are two sound studies that we're, we are submitting. One is from Hamilton, New Jersey, and the other one is from Chandler, Arizona. Hamilton's a little more similar to ours, because it's near a four-lane highway, it's a freestanding building, there's a strip center across the street, and behind that, there's some residential. Chandler's a little different, because it's an end cap and a, in-line strip center, which is where a lot of our locations are. That goes to, really speaks to how quiet our places are, because we're in line with other retailers and backing up to, like Kevin said, a residential in Fanwood. But we are submitting those tests, and they asked for similarities and differences that may have an effect on those sound tests, and we've highlighted those. And the main focus of that is that those sound tests were done with the vinyl fencing and not with the BuffTech fencing, so we will be submitting those.
That's an important factor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so George, not to shortcut you, but when I saw the detail here, that's some, I figured that obviously was going to be the issue, one of the two issues. And planning board sought that information, and I, so it's continued tabled before them, so, you know, why not table it here and at least look at that, that same info? I mean, you, it's a clear application, I asked you directly, you're going to move forward, if it gets denied, you've said yes. That's a pretty important point to make as well. But in any event, that's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking at, at this point. I'll ask, anybody else have any questions?
I'm more curious if there's a way to determine how much more sound is absorbed by.
Good question.
Adding two more feet versus six feet. If there's, if there's some way, and I don't know if that's something that could come from the manufacturer.
I just spoke to them today.
Because I think that would be, you know, if you could say, you know, if we add two more feet, we're going to pull 25% more, that's not going to go out into the neighborhood. I think that's, you know, information like that's very helpful for everyone.
They're actually manufacturer.
That's exactly what I was driving at when I asked the question. We knew what the actual difference was between the, the two heights of the, of the fence construction. So, I would agree with your recommendation, Dan, only because with all that information, then I feel we would be in a better position to, to make it honest.
Yeah, and it's able to, okay, planning board anyway, but I don't see any phone-in commenters or e-participation, so I will ask if anyone in the audience wants to care to speak about this. Come on up there, Om.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was at the planning board meeting last week.
I know who you are, but can you give us your name and your address? Yeah.
Yeah, my name is Om Popli.
Sit down, make yourself comfortable, Om.
That's okay, that's fine.
You guys must have worked together, huh?
That's okay, that's okay.
Once or twice.
My name is Om Popli, I have an office very close to this proposed facility. In fact, less than 50 yard, 50 feet. The parking lot is less than maybe 20, 30 feet from the facility. We employ about 60, 70 people in the facility, all professional people, engineers, architects, all this. We have been there for 27 years, and I have seen how the whole area has progressed over the last 25 years. In fact, we were involved in the improvement of this intersection, 441 and 250, you can imagine maybe 15, 20 years ago, and Phil Channing was the supervisor at that time. This intersection is a showcase for the town of Penfield, coming from west, coming from east. So, I really don't want to see this intersection being downgraded as we go along. The plaza itself was a mess several years until Rochester Regional Health came in, and they made some improvement. So, we are proud to be here as a part of that area. Now, to come back to this facility, I, I kind of expressed my concern about this facility. It's a great facility, no, nothing wrong with that, but maybe it's not the right place. It's right in the middle of the plaza, middle of the neighborhood, next to the office building, next to Aldi store, you know, Steve Rochester Medical Building is next to that, dentist office, the new regional, Rochester Regional Dentist Office has opened up. So, I'm not really sure this is the right place. But anyhow, I want to come back to this, that's what I expressed to the town planning board, I want to come back to variance for eight feet high. I just picked up a little note from Mr. Slins' comment on the previous observation, previous variance which was approved. By grant, the purpose of variance is to make sure it helps the town and the neighborhood at the same time. The town board has to ask itself, by granting a variance, are we improving the image of the place? Are we really enhancing the neighborhood? That's my first question to the board. The next is, it's a kennel, it's an animal facility, you can name it, whatever you want to name it, it's an animal facility. They say there'll be no 90, 90 dogs at one time. It's a lot of dogs, and they start barking, dark, 90 dogs, you can imagine the noise created, and I am within 50 feet of the facility. There are hours of operation from 7:30 to 7:30, our, our office operation is from 7:30 to 6:30. That's the peak time our people are there. I hate to be in a situation where we end up next to the kennel, and our staff, staff leaving it, hey, we don't want to live, we don't want to work in this neighborhood. So, all this 27, 30 years of our being there goes down the drain. It's not only that. It's not only that, we'll have a difficulty in attracting talent to our place. It's very difficult to attract the talent, otherwise it would be more difficult to attract the talent when somebody walks in, country walks in and he sees the dog barking. So I'm not really sure it's the right place for the facility. But anyhow, to make story short, I had a chance to go through Google, you can really get Google, it can give you a lot of information about anything you want. And I printed out some of these things here and I will share with the board, how this facility and the dog noise has an impact on the human ears, hearing power. I didn't have this information available at the planning board meeting, but I was able to get it. So if there's a relevant highlight, it's any of those. I'm sharing.
Do we have an electronic copy of this as well? But can, yeah, if, or I can.
This, there's a lot of information available on web about these things and I happened to pick up a few of them. And basically what it says is the dog noise in a kennel can erupt to 115 decibels, the noise level is measured in terms of decibels. And it also tells you that up to a certain level, the human, now human, up to 6, 70 decibels, human can hear it properly. Anything over 70 decibels, up to 80 decibels, it starts impacting the hearing power of the human. It doesn't happen overnight, but it happens over time. The more the frequent the row, the longer you're staying there, you hear the dogs, so you, your hearing power is impacted. And there are a lot of studies done and this information is just for your purpose to look at it. And this, I'll pass it on to Andy, or passing on to the planning board here. So I'm really concerned about the facility itself.
Right.
Another thing I'm concerned about is putting eight-feet fence in the middle of plaza. It's not a highway. You go to the highway, ask the guy, people who live along the highway beyond the fence and ask them, hey, does the noise impact you? Yes, it does. I mean, you can't just, noise does not just evaporate, it just goes up and spreads around. Another thing I see about concern is about eight-feet-high fence. I'm not really sure, we have a winter here, sometimes you get two, three, four feet of snow. How are they going to clean it? How the dogs are going to run around? You cannot have the equipment to clean that place, you cannot shovel it eight-feet-high. There are some operational issues. So given all those things, my suggestion, my request would be for the board to deny this variance. It's nothing that is needed, it's the wrong place for the right facility. Maybe they can go about a mile east of it, there's plenty of open areas, nothing to worry about it. And again, I bring back to this, on this question, just not too long ago, 10, 15, 20 minutes ago, by granting this variance, are we improving the neighborhood? Are we getting anything in ahead of it? So keep in mind when you make a decision.
Yeah, I just, Om, thank you for your comments. You know, you're here and I kind of figured what your stance was going to be tonight and frankly, that's one of the reasons I asked them whether they intend to move forward with their project and their application with the planning board if it's denied here. And you heard what their answer was. I certainly respect your right to be here and your comments, but I also have to tell you, I think a lot of the comments that you're making are more planning board issues frankly than ours.
Understandable.
And you know that, you know that. But as I said before, I'm going to make a motion to table so we can get more of this data. This is good and helpful and now we have something else to look at in the next month. But it seems to me that the applicant is making the argument that from your perspective and other neighbors' perspective, an eight-foot fence is better. Now, you raise a point, well, how's it going to look? That's a fair point and, you know, we can digest that one as well, but I hope that the information we're going to get will allow us all to answer for ourselves whether, as somebody else has put it, is the two feet going to make enough of a difference to justify the variance request?
Understand, Dan.
And remains undecided at this point.
Understand. Well, unfortunately, I didn't have this information available before the planning board.
Sure.
I never thought about that part.
Yeah.
And so, let me Google a decibel, what is the decibel level of dogs? And it gave me a lot of information. I mean, the kennel, if it's, this is a kennel, the decibel could be up to 115 decibels and the human eardrums can easily hear up to 70. Anything over 70 becomes a noise and the more noise you hear every day, the more, your damn, your ear gets damaged. And also I want to mention to the board for your information, it was not only this information as well, in fact, there were a lot of legal things available, who sued what in a situation like that. I didn't want to get into that. So I wouldn't be surprised going forward, it doesn't become a legal issue for us, it doesn't become a legal issue for the town.
I get it.
I mean, it's a lot of, I mean, it's on the website, you know, you can see the issue, legal issues. I didn't go into the detail that those are available on the Google.
Yeah, well, you could feel free to submit anything, I just asked you to provide a copy to the applicant.
Yeah, I did.
Anything else you might submit in the future?
If you submit anything else, if you submit to the town, then the town can distribute it to everybody.
Pardon?
Whatever you, you know, submit, if you submit additional information, just submit it through the towns, that way the town can distribute to the applicant and the board.
Okay, well, I've given, to pass it on to the planning board, you know.
Yes.
Because I didn't have this information at that time.
Thank you.
So I would have a reverse question for you.
Sure.
Based on the fact that the applicant is willing to provide detailed information on the noise abatement, noise levels, things like that, are you willing to consider that information as well?
Well, I'm still against eight-feet fence, right in the middle of the plaza.
Fair enough, but you did raise the issue with the noise level and.
No, but that might eliminate. In fact, my suggestion to the board would be, I would really have the study to be done by a medical profession, what impact this is going to have 50 feet from the proposed facility, how much decibel level we will get. I would suggest to the board.
So it's clear they can build a six-foot fence, correct? That's per code, a six-foot fence is allowed to be there. Do you agree with that?
Sir, it's per code is six, you don't want to make it worse going to eight?
Well, the question is, if the noise, if we, if, once it gets submitted, if the noise that is produced from this dog hotel is less with an eight-foot fence than it is with a six-foot fence, would you be in favor of it then?
Well, sir, there are two questions here to the whole issue. For this board is variance from six to eight feet.
Correct.
Okay. The overall issues of a planning board, it's a conditional use, it's not permitted use, it's a conditional use. When the plaza got approved, the neighborhood got approved, it used to be party house years ago.
Right.
And when that got demolished, the new facility came in. And we were part of that improvement of the facility because we liked it, it made sense, it was more compatible with the professional use. And we were assured that this is going to be an office use. So I'm going back now five, 10, 15 years, 10 years from what it got approved, now we're being, hey, it's a conditional use. Conditional use is up to the decision of the board. It's not, it's not, it's not a, what do you call, blank check. It's a conditional use, approval by the board. If board likes the project, board likes everything else, they can, okay? But it's not a granted use. So my question really would be for the planning board, which I suppose I'm in the wrong situation, to consider all these sets. And I hope this discussion passes on to the planning board. In fact, I had a couple of planning board members stop by in an office, I was not there, but they happened to talk to my son and they were surprised, they said, we never knew you guys existed here. I mean, we've been there 27 years. And now all of a sudden we exist there because of the kennel situation.
Yeah, you're, honestly, your points are valid, there's no doubt about that. I think we do need to gather some more information so that we can address the issues that are before us, before this board. And, you know, there may be some planning board members that are watching right now, one in particular likes to watch these.
They have an operation from 6, 7:30 to 7:30 and this night, facility is not monitored at night.
Right.
What happens if some of the animals gets out? You know, they can care all kinds of security, but things do happen in life, you know, nothing is guaranteed perfect, but things happen. What happens is when the dog gets out?
Okay.
And then we have a neighborhood of, I don't know how many units are there, with kids.
Yep.
I hate to be in that scary situation.
All right, I think we, you've made the point, Om, and then some, and we appreciate it. I'll ask, is there anybody else in the audience?
Thank you very much.
And if you have anything more to submit, yeah, just send it in.
No, I think that's all, if I Google something, I'll find it, I'll pass it on, you know.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so nobody else in the audience cares to speak about this? All right, then I will, if you want to make the motion to.
Yeah, I make a motion to table until the additional information as requested by the planning board is provided.
Very good. I'll second that. All right, so we have a motion to table for the reasons stated in a second. Any further discussion?
I also just want to make sure we note that we'd like to see some kind of difference between the eight-foot and six-foot.
For sure.
Because I don't think that was necessarily part of the planning board tabling motion.
Yeah, if you could add that to the request.
That's really the key issue. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, very thorough application as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask if Betsy was busy tonight, but it's always good to see you.
She is, and it's always good to see you too as well.
Go ahead.
I got one more, just one more question to follow up, I thought about, if we could get a list of locations and their settings currently, where they sit right now and across wherever they are, in a sense, you know, are they in plazas, are they in residential, are they, you know, where are their locations set?
Any of them that would be as similar to this location as possible would be very beneficial.
Yeah, that's included with the two sound studies.
Okay, perfect.
The one in Chandler, that plaza, and it's on the end cap, is right next to a giant apartment complex and you can see it in the aerial. And Hamilton is very similar to here where there's road building, residential, Fanwood backs up to residential, we'll send you all of them. And there's no pending litigation against any canines anywhere.
Perfect.
But. Yep, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See, exciting.
Indeed.
Indeed. I got that.
All right.
I'm not leaving, don't worry.
He's just down here.
You can probably read the next one, Andy. I think he's just getting water.
Whitman Osterman and Hannah LLP, One Commercial Plaza, Albany, New York, 12260. On behalf of Chick-fil-A, request approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow less parking than required under section 250-7.7-D of the code at 2130 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Kerry Ventures Fairport Nine Mile Point Road LLC and its own general business, SBL number 140.01-2-4.1/PERK. This is application number 23Z-0051.
Okay, maybe we have your names and addresses.
Certainly, my name is Dave Everett, I'm the Land Use Council and agent for Chick-fil-A for this application in Albany, New York.
Randy Beebout, Bowler Engineering, civil engineering for the project located in Sunnyland in Oaks.
Great. So you guys have been here before asking for some variances, which I think were pretty much granted. Tonight, you're asking for a variance from parking spot requirements.
Yes, that's correct.
So I think 115 are required and you're asking for it to have 10 fewer than required?
That's correct.
Pretty close, yeah. So just, why don't you just tell us why? It seems like that's kind of the trend that restaurants, you're very familiar with them, is going, not as many people going in the restaurant as they used to, people in the drive-through, hence focusing on drive-through lanes more so than your parking spots. So therefore, 10 fewer is actually going to probably be better when you talk about a flow of customer, but.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
You summarized it perfectly. I think we're all done.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so you did a great job summarizing it. So as you said, we're looking for 10 less and essentially what we've done with this plan is put those 10 spaces that we're not going to have into the drive-through stack. This site has three drive-through lanes, which ends up narrowing down to two, but we feel that there's more benefit for that to be in the drive-through stack. In the application that was submitted, we provided some comparison to other Rochester locations, one in Buffalo, but if we just focus on the ones in Rochester, Grease, which was the first site, sits around 56 spaces and Aronakoi is at 64 and Henrietta at 63. And just for comparison, the stack at Henrietta is about 24, about 25 at Aronakoi and about 20 at Grease. And I would mention, we just got approval in the town of Grease at the Chick-fil-A to modify the drive-through to add more capacity of about 10 to 12 cars. And with that, we're reducing parking from the 56 down to about 51. There was four spaces that was kind of adjacent to the end of the drive-through lane, nobody parked there. You know, our operator said, I would rather have the stack and it is, maybe a lot of people know, that being the first location, there was a lot of stacking onto the side street when that opened. Doesn't hope, doesn't happen now nowhere as near as frequently as it did because of Aronakoi and Henrietta. And of course, once this opens, it kind of just levels everything out. But we're able to, by making that change, we're able to bring the, those cars off the side street into the site without negatively impacting the onsite parking.
Yeah, it's clear from, again, a very thorough application. I'm no expert in this area, but it seems to me the request that you're making not only makes sense, but it's from an operation standpoint, but also from a safety standpoint, actually, so.
Can you, yeah, can you just, so the stacking at this location is what now by eliminating?
Yeah, we're in the high 40s, 50 range of stacking with all three lanes.
And what would, if you didn't eliminate these 10 spots, what would it have otherwise been?
If we had the 10 spaces, we'd be in the low 40 range.
So you get an extra 10?
Yeah, we're getting approximately an extra 10 spaces with that stack and there's just a lot of benefit to have that.
Mm-hmm.
And you think about it, the overall net of the site really stays the same, we're just moving them, moving that capacity into the drive-through.
So part of the reason for this is, you know, during COVID, everybody went through the drive-through, right? None of these restaurants were open and so there really was no need to park and the public got used to doing that. And so that's one of the main reasons why Chick-fil-A is focusing on, you know, the drive-through because people are still wanting to do that and not actually go in. So we're trying to maximize the stacks as much as we possibly can. So, and it's been a balance on this site between trying to, you know, meet the code but also try to provide as many stacks as possible, which is really kind of more important and as you made the point, makes a lot more sense. But when you take the 105 parking spaces plus the, you know, 50-something stacks in the drive-through, or 150 vehicles, you know, that can be put on this site, that's a lot of vehicles. So we think this is a good balance, you know, it's a relatively minor variance, like 9% or so.
Yeah.
or so. We hope the board agrees with that. We have worked with the planning board and the staff to try to effectuate that balance. We've discussed a bunch of different options, try to comply. And this is kind of the, sort of the best that we've kind of come up with.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
No.
I don't see any call-ins. I don't see any emails. So anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, so we will proceed then with the application. The first motion that I would make is to declare it a type 2 action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further action on our part.
I'll second.
All right, we have a seeker motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits, I would make a motion to approve, really for the reasons stated by board members and applicant. It's nowadays, things are different in terms of restaurants, in terms of people using the drive-throughs rather than parking and going in to order. I think we've granted similar applications, probably right down the road. I'm sure McDonald's right down the road we did. And probably you'll see some more of them, which we'll grant. So I think it's not only a valid application, but it's a wise one. So for those reasons, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, a motion to approve in two seconds. So any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, well done.
Good job.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bernadette and Timothy Dougherty, 53 Avanmore Way, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a front porch with less setback than required under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 53 Avanmore Way. The property is currently or formerly owned by Bernadette and Timothy Dougherty and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 139.08-1-13. This is application number 23Z-0052.
We always save the toughest ones for last.
This is riveting.
Ooh, can we add that to the excitement?
We've been thinking of what the word should be. Thank you for having us. This has been interesting to watch. So our current setback from the front of our house to the road is 54 feet.
I'm sorry, he's asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot my, I forgot, I'm Bernadette.
We do feel like we know you from your laugh.
I get that a lot.
Very much appreciated, by the way.
I get that a lot.
You can hear anywhere.
Bernadette Dougherty, 53 Avanmore Way.
No board in the town has more fun than this one.
I'm coming again.
And Tim Dougherty, 53 Avanmore Way.
So our current setback is 54 feet from the house to the road. Our current porch is like four feet, two inches. We want to put a portico on the front because we are north-facing and we get a lot of rain and snow. And we just need a slightly bigger front porch to accommodate that. So we just got our drawings back that I sent to you guys. And the porch will be going five feet, four inches out. That's our new portico. Won't that look nice?
Nice.
Yeah, thanks for submitting everything. I mean, you're asking for a half a foot.
I know. Maybe a foot, yeah. It's going from four to, yeah, it's kind of crazy.
So, I mean, to really accomplish what you're looking to do here, is there any way to shrink it up a half a foot? Is it just, no?
Well, honestly, four foot, two inches of a porch isn't a lot. I mean, when you open the door, you're almost stepping off the porch. So just that little bit helps.
Other than that, have you talked to any of your neighbors? What do they think of your plan?
They're excited. I've had one say, how do we do that on our house? Because they have a little slightly different style.
You had a really thorough application. I didn't have too much other questions. I mean, this is something that, as you've mentioned, there's really not a lot of other options. And the variance request is proportionately pretty small. I don't know if you guys had any?
No, I don't.
No phone calls, no emails. So I'll ask anyone in the audience, care to speak about this? Raise your hand if you're in favor of this applicant.
That foot.
Very good. All right, so let's proceed with its consideration.
I would first make a motion to, that this is a type 2 action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further action.
Second.
All right, a seeker motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I would make a motion to approve this request. It's a very minimal variance. There's really not any other options. It's an improvement to the overall look and aesthetic of both your home and the neighborhood. And so for those reasons, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
The only thing that, totally in favor of this, but I do want to make sure that you have, you know, enough of a variance if there's any, you need a little bit of wiggle room where there's actual, because I thought you said maybe up to a foot or something?
Yeah, because I'm not exact, because I don't know if I did.
So when he came back with the drawing, Barone came back with the.
Couple more inches.
He said they have five foot, four inches. When we thought it was just going to be a foot. So it looks like it's a foot and two inches.
Well, that should be no, that should be.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, you don't want to have something where we grant you half a foot and you need a foot.
Right.
And then when you go to sell the house, some lawyers are a pain in the neck and make you come back.
And lawyers are a pain in the neck.
That's right.
So what do you need? What is required?
A foot and a half, is that?
That would be, that would be perfect.
Yes. I'm still okay with a foot and a half. I just, let's get, we.
So amend the motion to say a foot and a half. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
And this was very entertaining.
It was. We tried.
It's a good way to spend our night.
Wow.
Have a good one.
All right.
We should start charging them.
All right, I think that was the last application, right?
Yep.
All right, well, very good. That was the last application, so we will stand adjourned and see you next month. Thank you.
Have a good night.